Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 12th Board of County Commission meeting. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And if we just ask that you take a moment of silence, please. Commissioner Smith?
Stand, please, for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to minutes, could I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve the minutes, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resolutions, awards, and presentation, Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Alberta Gillespie, are you here? Would you come forward, ma'am? You may all come with her if you'd like to.
That's okay.
I'm going to read this resolution, and then if you'd like to say a few words, we'd be so honored to hear from you tonight, ma'am.
I indeed am honored to be in your presence. Thank you very much for inviting me.
Thank you. Whereas Alberta Bertie Gillespie began her health educator position with Brevard County Health Department in 1971, and whereas Bertie Gillespie is recognized for over a decade of life-saving service to Brevard County residents, and whereas Bertie developed to maintain expectant mother programs to improve the health and mortality rates of infant births in Brevard County, and whereas her programs for expectant mothers decreased fetal alcohol syndrome, newborn addiction to illegal drugs, and other impairments to the quality of life for infants, and whereas her stop-smoking clinics and programs saved countless lives from respiratory diseases and cancers by ending thousands of addictions to tobacco, whereas her programs to combat and end obesity through diet education and encouragement to prevent diabetic amputations and premature deaths, and whereas Bertie combated sexually transmitted diseases by educating the community and created awareness and prevention programs for thousands of potential victims of HIV and AIDS. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize Alberta N. Gillespie for her dedication and service to the health and well-being of her fellow citizens. Done, ordered, and adopted in this regular session, the 12th of February 2019. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
It was my pleasure. I can't say it was my pleasure when I had to deal with some of the forces that we had going then, but I'm so happy that it turned out as well as it did have.
Thank you for all you do. This is probably one of my favorite resolutions so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if anybody in the back would like to sit, there's a whole bunch of front seats available. I mean, for those standing in the back or that want to move up.
We'll call on you if you don't sit up front.
Point you out, as a matter of fact. No, just kidding. Okay, we're going to move on to our next resolution. And I apologize, I don't have a name, it's just we were honored to be asked to do this resolution. So if you guys could just come up? Would you like to speak before or after?
After.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. This is a resolution for Black History Month. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Brevard County, Florida, in recognition of Black History Month 2019. Whereas the Brevard County Commission acknowledges the significance of Black History Month as an important opportunity to recognize the tremendous contributions of African-Americans to the history of the United States, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges that over the past century, African-American life, history, and culture have become major forces in the United States and in the world, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges that this transformation is the result of effort by African-American scholars, artists, athletes, leaders, and I'll add soldiers, and others self-consciously using their talents to change how the world views African-Americans. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners acknowledges that this improvement, or that this movement, the product of an organization of institutions and institution builders giving direction to effort, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners asks our citizens of this county to commit themselves to an ideal Brevard county where equality and justice will always prevail, and to the principles of love, wisdom, and compassion towards one another. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners agrees that while we began in division, we must now move forward with purpose, united tirelessly as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and honor the contribution of all pioneers who help ensure the legacy of these great United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of February 2019 as Black History Month, and urges the citizens of Brevard to be mindful of the contributions of African-Americans and all of its citizens throughout the year. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 12th day of February 2019.
Move to adopt.
A motion by Commissioner Loeb.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, Madam Chair, for the resolution. First, I'd like to recognize Central Brevard Branch NAACP President Clarence Whipple. Also want to recognize Area Director Alberta Wilson, who I was told could not be here today. And we have South Brevard Branch NAACP President, Mr. James Minus, and also from the South Brevard Branch, the Reverend George Wright.
Wright.
Okay, sorry about that. I'd also like to recognize Brevard County's government's Team Diversity. They're standing up here, many of them with me. I'm a proud member. Six years ago, Brevard County Government put together Team Diversity. It's a group of county employees whose mission is to both educate and celebrate our community's cultural diversity. It's what makes Brevard County great, not only as a place to live, work, and play, but because of who our neighbors are and where they come from. Throughout the years, Team Diversity has hosted many cultural events here at the Brevard County Government Center in Viera, and that continues later this month with the Black History Month celebration we're having on February 28th from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., and it's going to include live performances, music, art, and food trucks, so there's a little something there for everybody. The Commissioners are invited, the public is invited, and our coworkers are invited, so we hope you can attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to speak?
You can speak for us.
Don't feel obligated, but you're sure welcome to.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you so much for the proclamation. I can't speak for everyone, but we're all in this together to do the right thing for humanity. There was a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King that once said, and I quote, "Injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere." And thank you, Commissioners, for the proclamation to show that Brevard County Commissioners is on board with doing the right thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, John. What time? What did you say?
Okay, moving on to consent. I believe I have a card.
Just as a heads up, I'd like to pull item one from consent and address it preferably after item J's and Juliette eight.
I have a card for that item as well.
Oh, okay.
I guess the speaker on that item, since we're going to be moving that item, just be aware of, I mean, I hate to make you wait for that item, however, since we're not addressing it until then.
If they'd like to speak now, I mean, it's up to you, but I don't have a problem any which way.
Okay. Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to vote no on F3 without comment.
Any other Commissioners?
I make a motion to approve the minutes except for F1.
Commissioner Pritchett to approve the minutes except for item F1, and with Commissioner Tobia voting no on item three.
Sir.
I'm sorry, consent.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The speaker for item F1 is welcome to come and speak now, or they can defer and speak when we bring up this item during that time. And that would be Dani Straub. Okay, I just didn't want you to have to wait. I wanted to give you the opportunity to speak if you wanted to do it now.
I'm here representing the city for both items.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Loeb, you'd like that item moved?
If we could, after J8.
I'm just going to make a note of that now.
Thank you.
Okay, item G1, public comments. Mr. Tovey?
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I submitted my card, and on it was about my property liens, which I have no information about anything, it's just from recollection of things, but I'd given you a piece of paper with some photographs of my after, before, and after work, but on this piece of paper it has a boat that Natural Resources was supposed to take, but they inadvertently took my boat, which was floating by my work. And then they put it in impound, put a big hole in it, paid the fine, got it out, and Brevard County put a lien against me. And not to mention the code enforcement, because it wasn't on the trailer, the brand-new trailer, I might add, that I had to spend $3,000 on, and it wasn't on the trailer all the way, so I had to fix the hole that they put in it. I fixed the hole, put it on the trailer like they wanted it, and then later on, and the word I was looking for was not magnified, but it was not increased either, and I have it written down, but it escalated. That was the word. It went from the FEMA trailer that I did not want from the hurricanes, and then it just kept on progressing and escalating and escalating. So I have a fine for the boat that Natural, and that's why I don't want to work with a lot of these people, because they've done a lot of things in my life that I don't accept and I don't condone. And some of the shrimp that I, these are six jumbo shrimp on a regular-sized plate. I catch them by hand or used to. Now I grow them. I do the crabs, I do fish, and when I clean a lagoon, save our lagoon, I did. And all this is after the fact. Where were they when it was needed and there was a lagoon crisis? There wasn't nobody around. And it took me years to get everybody or people involved in it more and more, and finally we got a platoon of community people that are concerned about our lagoon. The Lagoon, instead of 50 million different people doing it, have Natural Resources as director, the five employees that she has, the lagoon should be divided in five separate areas, and each one of those five people should have one section assigned to them, and they should go through it, which I've been through the whole lagoon, and the area most important, and I could do the most effect, I turned in a copy of my route. Anyways, I did it, and I'll be spending my time releasing all the information, and yay! People care about the lagoon or are willing to do something about it now, and I appreciate all that, and all that's going to help what I've already done. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Thank you. James DiGelardo. Hi. State your name and address, please.
James DiGelardo, 617 Perriwinkle Circle, Barefoot Bay, Florida.
Okay. Go ahead.
Why don't I ask for questions? I've got a...
Pardon me?
I'm trying to get some easements removed. It thinks it questions only on the card?
Oh, the card was incorrect, because it says Agenda G. All right, so that's item H...
Three, I believe.
H3? Okay. I apologize, the card was marked incorrectly.
Oh, okay.
It was marked for public comment, so...
Okay. So you deal with my case a little later, then?
Yeah, is that okay? I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Item H1.
Good evening, Commissioners. Item H1 is a petition to vacate a portion of a public utility and drainage easement to remove an existing storage building as an encroachment into the said easement. It's located on Lot 1, Block 318 of the Port St. John, Unit 8 subdivision. We've received no objections, and staff has no concerns with this request.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H2?
Item H2 is a petition to vacate partial one that's identified as a proposed drainage and retention area easement per OR Book 2733, page 858. This would remove an existing building as an encroachment into that said easement. We've received no objections to this, and staff has no concerns with this request.
Madam Chair, I'd like to propose that we approve this.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Tobia? Second by Commissioner Pritchett.
Yes, just a quick second, Madam Chair.
Sure.
Would this be the Skringe property?
This is the...
Yes.
Yes, it is. Main Street, yes.
Yes. I don't know, some great things come out of Brevard County, and I don't know if you guys are following what is happening, and Dr. Skringe probably was not prepared for this, but with all the stuff that Elon Musk is doing, there was a Business Week, or Wall Street Journal article, or both, this past week, saying that one of Brevard's own, Dr. RJ Skringe, who's creating a brand-new electric vehicle, is putting, you know, Mr. Musk's feet to the fire. So great things come out of Brevard County, and Dr. Skringe's son, who's also Dr. Skringe, is just another example, so be on the lookout. Thank you for being here, and if he's ever in the area, we'd love to have him come up and tell him all the wonderful things that he's doing.
That's great. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H3?
Item H3 is a petition to vacate part of two public utility easements that are centered along the common line between lots 38 and 39 of Block 77 of the Barefoot Bay, Unit 2, Part 11 subdivision. This would allow the owner who owns both lots to build a garage into said easements. We've received no complaints, or excuse me, objections about this, and staff has no concerns about this request.
Commission, what is your desire?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tobia, second by Commissioner, gosh, Loeb. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I have some cards for this item. Item I1.
Would you like me to introduce the item before you?
I think so.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. This is the Lagoon Education Outreach and Marketing Campaign that was, that came to you about a month ago, and you directed staff to take the previous recommendation of the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee back to that committee to ask for options, and so this agenda packet provides the options that the committee came up with. So they recommended that a minimum, the board move forward with funding three out of the five campaigns, fertilizer, grass clippings, and septic system maintenance, and leave it to the board's discretion whether you want to fund the stormwater pond maintenance or excess irrigation programs.
Do you want to do speakers first? Would you like to speak on it? Okay. Dr. John Windsor? And after John Windsor, we'll have James Glass.
Good evening, John Windsor here. I've got spare glasses tonight.
If you have address, please.
Pardon?
Address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Melbourne, Florida. Been doing this a long time, and I get flustered sometimes. Okay, at the January 8th, 2019 Board of County Commissioners meeting, you folks sent this back to the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Committee. I'm one of the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Committee, but I'm not speaking for them. I'm an FIT, Emeritus Professor of Oceanography and Environmental Science. I've worked on the lagoon for 35 years, and I also served on the Contract Selection Committee for picking out the firms that are going to get this award. In order to turn off sources of nitrogen and phosphorus, and I think we all agree that nitrogen and phosphorus are problems, to the lagoon, all Brevard citizens have a role to play, not just wastewater utility managers. What all the public can play in lagoon cleanup is a key element of these education programs. There are five campaigns that were described in the original contracts, and while I personally would like to see all five funded, I realize you want to cut back on the money, so at least fully fund the three, the fertilizer, the grass clippings, and the septic. Don't do a cross-the-board cut, because none of the programs will be very effective if they can't get a bare minimum money to be accomplished. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. James Glass? And after James, we'll have John Wyler.
I'm Jim Glass. I'm a member of the Florida Fly Fishing Association, and I'd like to speak...
Address, please. I'm sorry.
Beg pardon?
Address, please.
Oh, 2781 Inglewood Drive, Melbourne.
Thank you.
I attended the meeting when the Citizens Committee took up this issue, and there are other agencies that do advertising and provide information and education about these issues. At that meeting, nobody mentioned that, so I'd like to mention it to you all, so you know there's other agencies that do this, and there's some overlap. Fertilizer education is administered by the University of Florida Institute of Food and Agricultural Services. The extension service is located in Cocoa. It's responsible for education on turf, lawn fertilizer management, including public advertising, lawn clippings, and sustainable fertilizer use. I have visited that office two times, because our orange tree got sick, and they have all kinds of information about fertilizer education, other issues, so that's one thing I wanted to mention. The other one, septic tank maintenance education is administered by the Florida Department Health. These are requirements. Florida Department Health is responsible for septic tank education. I've spoken to Dr. Roder, who is in charge of the onsite, I'm sorry, the septic tank programs for the state of Florida, and he gave me websites for their information about education on septic tanks having to be cleaned out. I attended a meeting of the IRL NEP. They have people in educational programs about fertilizer and septic tank maintenance and issues like that. Also, St. John's Water Management District. We had Ed Garvey attend one of our fishing club meetings a couple of years ago, and Ed talked to us about these issues. They had, he had some pamphlets there, too. So the question I have, should we not ask these agencies to do their job as it's one of their responsibilities? Let's don't duplicate something that other agencies are taking care of. So I would ask you to consider deferring this decision until you take up the actual lagoon plan, because there are some other issues with the lagoon plan that we would like to talk to you about later. Thank you very much.
John Wyler? And after John Wyler, Dr. Soto?
Good evening, Commissioners. It's nice to be here again and to talk about issues that cost us a lot of money in the county. I recommend that the county commission in this specific issue not award a contract for over a quarter million dollars this year and going into 2020. This is a feel-good expenditure, in my opinion, and doesn't require an outside marketing campaign to implement. As Mr. Glass prior to me indicated, there are numerous organizations that are already putting out published information and distributing to the public for this specific issue. Most Brevard residents already, in my opinion, are also familiar with these things. If you own a property with a septic system on it, you are fully aware, or you probably are fully aware, of what to do to keep your septic system working. You'll be the first one to know it's not working. You'll be the first one to know it's not working, if you have one. Trust me. I'm on a septic system, and I've been on one for over 30 years.
Were you ever made aware?
If the commission believes that the public needs to be frequently reminded of these issues again and again, I recommend that the county commission task the county Natural Resources Department staff to create a focused news release on a quarterly basis, then distribute to all the digital and print media, TV, radio stations, newspapers, et cetera. And this will be carried in the news, and no additional expenditure from the Indian River Lagoon Fund or from the county. It's just our staff doing this. And this would be a worthwhile tasking, I believe, for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Soto? And after Dr. Soto, Mary Spar?
Good evening. My name is Lisa Soto. I'm the Executive Director of the Marine Resources Council, and I'm here representing our organization. I'm here to encourage you to fully fund the education budget that was originally proposed, or the largest portion of it. And I'll reiterate what Dr. Windsor said, that, you know, cutting a campaign would be a bad idea. So, what we're seeking here is research-driven education, so that you know what the current status of knowledge is. We can't just speculate, you know, whose opinion of what our citizens know, their level of knowledge, what they're doing, their current actions and behaviors. Those things can be known. I sent you all a scientific journal that my colleague and I just published, demonstrating, without a doubt scientifically, that in Pinellas County, the residents are more aware of their fertilizer ordinance, their fertilizer rates are lower than the adjacent counties, and their pollution loads are low and not lower, so much lower, that the state of Florida is actually giving them a higher percentage decrease in their TMDL. So, they're saving themselves millions of dollars with their education campaign that they spent a couple hundred thousand to evaluate over the course of seven years. So, I encourage you to do, just like you are with the rest of your plan, research-driven education. We need to know, you know, these kinds of numbers. What is the current state of fertilizing? How many pounds of nitrogen are people applying to their lawns right now? After a campaign, how many pounds are they applying then? Then you can calculate a load reduction. Without those numbers, you're just, you're shooting in the dark, you're speculating, you're sending out brochures that may just end up in the landfill or in the recycling stream. You have no way of knowing if there's a behavior change or an associated environmental impact. That's what we need to know. We've got the opportunity to do it here. We've got the experts to do it here. You know, why not take advantage of a prime audience and get the work done that needs to get done to demonstrate proof positive that our citizens are ready to change our society? That's, well, I've got a minute left, so let's see. So, we can't keep going on the way, you know, we've done in the past. So, you know, the theory is that, you know, if you keep going without changing the way you've done things in the past and expect a different result, then you're, it's the definition of insanity. So, then what we've done in the past is send out brochures and talk to the newspaper and, you know, try to do things through the very, the cheap and free media channels. And it's not worked, that we need to do something different. So, let's try this, you know, let's invest in good education, let's invest in the research to get it done, do that, the important data collection, and fund the education campaign. Thank you for what you're doing. I appreciate, I know that this is a tough job that you all have, and I appreciate everything that you do every day. That's all I got.
Thank you. Hi, Mary.
Hi. Mary Spar, H25 Clifton's Cove Court, Cocoa. I support the recommendation of the Citizen Oversight Committee. I think that the educational outreach is extremely important. Your educational outreach, RFP, has three parts, which will probably be awarded to MRC and MTN. And to improve the health of the Indian River Lagoon, I suggest that you ask Natural Resources to facilitate communication and idea sharing between MRC and MTN. We want the best educational outreach, and such idea sharing has the potential to improve the products of both MRC and MTN. Please give this suggestion some serious consideration for our precious lagoon. Coordination between MRC and MTN especially makes sense for the grass clippings campaign. MRC is doing grass clippings campaigns in Lucia and Martin Counties, and started one in Brevard with some lagoon tax funds. MRC's partner, Uppercase, has done a very successful grass clippings campaign in Latla County. It looks like you're asking MTN to reinvent the wheel here, using MRC's survey data. Now, with regard to stormwater pond maintenance, if stormwater pond maintenance is not chosen for the funding, I hope that initiative would be temporarily set aside and perhaps revisited in the future through a different contract. I really think that homeowner association outreach, which is mentioned in that proposal, could make a huge difference, but it would require a very good community-based social marketing campaign. Finally, here's some information that might be helpful to MTN. After the 2016 fish kill, three of us citizens reached out to Natural Resources and suggested the countywide ordinance, requiring signage to be posted at retail establishments, informing citizens of fertilizer application restrictions, such as a summer ban on nitrogen and phosphorus. Martin County and some other local government have such a notice-to-consumer requirement in an ordinance. And we've been under the impression that the commission would consider such a countywide ordinance, but I'm not sure what's going on at this point. And hopefully, MTN will consider a point-of-sale signage requirement for their fertilizer education campaign.
Thank you. Thank you. Jake Zehunder? And if I said Zehunder wrong, please correct. Name and address, please.
Jake Zender, Melbourne, Florida, 1750 Mosswood Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Turtle Coast Group for Sierra Club, our local chapter here in Brevard County. I wanted to thank you guys for giving us an opportunity to comment as the public. In regards to the education funding in the sorrel plan, I think you guys did right when you gave citizens the opportunity to have an integral part of management in the sorrel plan. That's the Citizen Oversight Committee, Commission, Committee. And I think they really understand and have a pulse on what the community wants. That's why monitoring is part of this plan, so we can actually make sure our tax dollars are being spent effectively. And that's why the education piece is in there as well, because the community wants that component. It's a lot easier to prevent the nutrients from getting into the system by communicating effectively with the public about how they can prevent these nutrients than spending very expensive dollars on the back end to dredge it out. So, I just think this is a no-brainer, that we should absolutely keep education funding in the sorrel plan to a decent degree. We're not spending huge percentages of the plan on education components. In fact, if you are following the Indian River Lagoon National Eschre Program, they just came out with their 10-year CCMP for 2018 to 2028, I believe. And a piece of that is the One Voice, which is the community aspect. One Voice, One Community, One Lagoon. And a part of that is communication. One of the best ways you can communicate with the public is go out there and actually tell them about the issues and how they can effectively make change in their own lives to prevent nutrients from overloading the system. So, thank you guys so much.
Got a question, if I may?
Sure.
Got a question for you, and then, if I may, also one for staff.
Okay.
With respect to the IRL NEP, it's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that their One Voice Plan has a whole variety of different aspects...
Oh, it's tons.
Wait a second, of addressing the lagoon. And it's essentially their position that it's up to the individual counties and municipalities to prioritize which of those many aspects, individually or collectively, some, none, all, that they wish to focus on. So, it's not that the IRL NEP has suggested that any particular county focus on this particular item. It's one of a plethora of items that were made available for the counties to pick from. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a high-level guiding document. It doesn't lay out exact, replicable steps that each county needs to take, as far as I'm aware.
Okay. I appreciate something you mentioned, and also something Dr. Soto mentioned. You mentioned that a good goal would be, I don't want to misquote you, so correct me if I'm wrong at all, preventing nutrients from getting into the system.
Correct.
I agree with you, at least 100% with that. As much as I can possibly agree, I agree with that. And I also agree with Dr. Soto when she mentioned that we can't keep going on the way that we've done things in the past, and that that's essentially the definition of insanity. So, if I may bounce a question to staff?
Sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Question for you, if I may. In terms of this money, I would love to spend this money and much more on the lagoon to get it fixed, but my question is, are we obligated to spend some portion that's been at least earmarked for this at present toward communication and outreach? Or is it possible that we use some or all of this money toward actually fixing infrastructure and doing what we need to, to prevent those nutrients from coming in at the first place?
So, the plan that the board adopted last year, the 2018 Plan Update, it allocated this amount of funding for outreach specifically for these five specific campaigns.
If I can just follow up briefly? In terms of, and I apologize if I was at all unclear, in terms of my question, I'm looking, as opposed to what the prior board did, because obviously, we have a different, for better or worse, composition of the board. And my take on it, right, wrong, or indifferent, is that there's a much greater focus on infrastructure, and there's certainly a willingness to spend to the degree that's not been there in the past on infrastructure. And I'm just wondering if you're aware, and if you're not, that's fine, too, as to whether or not there's some lawful requirement that we spend this amount of money, or any particular amount of money, that's been earmarked for this communication and outreach, specifically on communication and outreach? Or if we could take some or all of this money and put it directly toward infrastructure, whether it's adding tertiary treatment at wastewater treatment facilities, or toward relining pipes, or doing things of that nature?
So, in response to the commission's request last month that the Oversight Committee reconsider this item, right, their recommendation was to fund at least three of the five, and then, if the county commission wishes to take the funds that were previously recommended for the stormwater pond maintenance or the excess irrigation and/or the excess irrigation campaigns, if you want to move those to infrastructure projects that would be consistent with what's in the plan, consistent with the kinds of projects that the voters approved, that they would defer to your judgment and accept an amended 2019 plan based on whatever your decision is here tonight on the outreach campaigns?
Part of my concern with this is essentially whether or not there's a better alternative. And I don't know at present whether there's a better alternative or not. This may be an excellent use of the funds. And I'm not at the point where I'm looking to ax this, certainly not at this juncture, because, as I said, I don't know that there's a better alternative. But I would ask, and I would move to table this item for four weeks or to the closest meeting, whether it's a little before or a little after that period in time, so that my office, and I don't mind taking the spear on this one or taking the lead on this one, can at least look into whether there perhaps may be a more efficacious use of the funds. If we find that there's not, or there's nothing, I'll happily be the one to move to approve this as been suggested.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind that, Commissioner Lober, as long as we're not doing anything to hinder anything with the lagoon. The Indian River Lagoon Plan, I think we need to be careful. I think if we're doing upgrades on facilities, it's good to lower the impact of what's being let out of the facilities of nitrogen and phosphorus. That's if they don't have to upgrade this money to go to. We have to be careful that we don't use the money on failing infrastructure, that's because that's our responsibility as the Brevard County Sewer System, City Titusville Sewer System, City of Cocoa. So, I think we need to maybe get an outline of what is appropriate, that we can spend the money on Ms. Barker, so that we don't violate voter intent when we put it out. But my guess is on this, because I've spent some time talking to you, I got to tell you, I'm not a biologist, and I listen to you guys, and you're so brilliant, and you teach me so much. But I know when you're doing this, you're looking at how much nitrogen is being affected, and how much phosphorus is being affected, so we're getting the best bang per buck. So, yeah, I could probably do this for 10 years and still feel dumb with it. But in the advertisement part that you have here, it really gets my attention when it starts talking about the grass clippings and how much nitrogen's being removed for $11 per pound. So, that's a pretty good number. And the fertilizer, I think, was in the plan to begin with, the education on that as far as voter intent. And when I asked you questions with this, because I'm always trying not to violate that, you told me we could kind of play around with, actually, four of them. Fertilizer kind of was in the plan for education, and the board wanted to do all five, but you said that you believed that probably the first three would have a good outcome as far as lowering the nitrogen levels into the community. Correct?
Yes. In your agenda packet, J1, the approval of the proposed plan, page Roman numeral 14, there's a table that provides the cost per pound, the average cost per pound, for every type of project that's in the plan. And if you want to compare that to the cost per pound estimated for each of these outreach campaigns, the bottom row of the, in your agenda summary, there's a table on page two. And the bottom row of that gives the cost per pound for each of these outreach campaigns. So, the $11 per pound that Commissioner Pritchett just spoke about for grass clippings, that is way more cost-effective than any other program in the plan. The $67 per pound for septic system maintenance, that is also more cost-effective than any other project in the plan. The stormwater pond maintenance at $91. There are a few other project types that can compete with that. Also, the excess irrigation at $196 a pound, there are, you know, multiple project types that could compete with that. One of the other changes, and I know, I'm sorry, mixing two agenda items, but one of the other changes proposed in the draft 2019 Plan Update, there's a whole section on unfunded project opportunities. And so, your question, Commissioner Lober, about, you know, is there something else cost-effective that could be done with these dollars? There are tables in there that show you, you know, the next most cost-effective septic sewer project is this, and here's how cost-effective it would be. And the next most cost-effective stormwater project is this, and how much it would be per pound of nutrients removed. So, did that answer your question?
Yes, ma'am, it did. So, on this, I'd be willing to table it, but I also would be willing to pass it with the fertilizer, grass clippings, clippings, and the septic maintenance system. The reason why I'm good with that is because we've been doing so much work here over the last few months of really focusing in on getting the septic tank systems, the education out there. It's just, there's just so much. But I almost wouldn't mind if we just had a, like a county commission workshop and really explored all the systems we have in the whole county, so that we can get an understanding of what's failing, and maybe we need to shift funds over from the enterprise funds and just really get some good handles on what we have going on as far as the problem of this stuff leaking into our lagoon, also in our water tables. So, I'm done, ma'am.
Commissioner Lober?
If I may, I think Commissioner Pritchett's brought up a good item here, and obviously, the tables that we're looking at involve estimates. And I couldn't say if they're incredibly accurate, largely accurate, or somewhere else on the scale. But I agree with you. I think that it appears, at least if we're to rely on the estimates, which I don't have a reason to suspect are incorrect, the most efficacious use of the funds insofar as the options that have been prevented, I'm sorry, presented, appears to be the grass clippings. And if it makes folks feel better, and it gives Natural Resources something to at least start working on now, I don't have a problem modifying the motion to pass grass clippings as requested, because it's not in the scheme of the amount of money being asked for. It's not a tremendous amount, and it appears to have the most bang for the buck out of those items. So, at this point, I'd go ahead and I'd modify the motion to pass the $20,000 for grass clippings, and then table the remainder of it for roughly one month.
Okay. Do I have a second, or do you want more discussion?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Pritchett, second. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with tabling it. Information is important and the more information we get, the better off we're all going to be and the better decision that we can make. But I will remind everyone that when we were out in Virginia, Barker and myself and Jim Barfield at the time, we were going to countless homeowners associations and town halls up and down Brevard County. And the number one question we always got was, how do we know that if we pass this plan, the plan will be adhered to? Because we've all seen politicians want to get hold of the money that we voters vote for, and then they turn around and start using it for something else. And so that's where the idea came for, came about to create the Citizens Oversight Committee. Because the Citizens Oversight Committee was charged with following the plan. And there, the committee is composed of regular, everyday folks, an awful lot of scientists. And, excuse me. The idea was that going forward, the plan would be flexible because they would be applying all the latest information and the latest technologies. But politicians wouldn't get to choose that, well, maybe we should not spend the money on what you folks wanted in the plan, maybe we should start funding it on things that we, the politicians, should do because we're smarter than you folks. I think that question was a very good question and we assured everyone when we were speaking to them that we would follow the plan as long as the Citizens Oversight Committee was in fact in charge. So that's, and I also, just as far as the education part, is my mother always said, education's the one thing you can never get enough of because it's the one thing nobody can ever take away from you. So I don't have, I don't have any opposition to furthering the education that the Citizens Oversight Committee has recommended. I think education is extremely important. And while I agree with Mr. Wyler that we have an awful lot of pamphlets out there, my question is, the average person that goes about their day-to-day lives, they don't know to go to IFIS or this place or that place to get a pamphlet. And they don't know, and I don't know if the pamphlet is current or it can be 10 years old. I don't know. But I do know that if you're in the face of the public on a regular basis, people are going to get the idea that grass clippings aren't a great idea, this is something that I, the homeowner, in my everyday life, I can make a difference in. And that's what we're looking to do. We need to mobilize the folks because you guys are very important and we're important. But when you get down to it, if we don't get public on board, this is not going to succeed.
Hey. Commissioner Loeb?
No, Commissioner Smith, I appreciate and I agree with you in terms of the overall sentiment and the spirit of what you're saying. It certainly makes sense. But I think it's also important to keep in mind that an advisory board is just that. I can tell you that all else equal, I certainly would defer to the advisory board. But I think there are circumstances in which it's incumbent upon us not to serve as rubber stamps for an advisory board, but to look at the information as you alluded to. If it turns out that the information isn't compelling, then by all means, God bless, let's do what the advisory board suggests. But if there's some reason or if we don't have all the information in front of us, I would just caution all of us, myself included, from doing anything that's impulsive because we're talking about a situation in which there are tremendous funds that need to be expended and the tax is only going to be available for a certain period of time. And when it's gone, I don't know whether it's going to come back or not. God willing, we'll have a decent headway in terms of our start on the lagoon and getting it cleaned up. But I'm very cautious and I agree with you in sentiment that, you know, certainly if there's a question and it's a close call, defer to the advisory committee. But again, there's a reason that it was set up as an advisory committee and not as a body that unilaterally has the authority to make decisions with respect to these things. So I do agree with you. There are certainly folks that are more educated on the advisory committee than I am with respect to the lagoon. But I have certainly gone out of my way, as much as reasonably what could be expected and perhaps quite a bit beyond that, to surround myself by folks that are experts in the field, some of whom are published, some of whom have, they're essentially degree collectors with more letters after their name than I can even in a lifetime figure out what they stand for. I've got folks that work for NASA doing, among other things, or at least with a history of having done fluid mechanics for the propulsion systems there with backgrounds in water chemistry. These are folks that, you know, any day of the week, I'll grant, I have a doctorate, but they're infinitely brighter than I am. It's not that I presume that I'm brighter than any particular individual sitting in this room, it's that I presume that there are other individuals who are equally competent as those that are qualified on the advisory committee, who for one reason or another may not be a part of the advisory committee, whether it's scheduling and teaching obligations or work obligations. And I am reticent to write off their opinions. And I think it's incumbent upon me and incumbent upon us as a committee to make sure that we at least do our due diligence prior to making the decision. So I agree with you in spirit, but I would ask that we at least get the ducks in a row. And if you don't agree, then by all means, you know, vote your conscience when this comes up again in a month.
Well, and I respect your opinion. And I agree that we should not be a rubber stamp. So if you think tabling this for a month would benefit us and give us more information and you more information, I don't have a problem with that.
I would appreciate that. And like I said before, I'm happy to come back in a month's time if I find that there's nothing that appears to be more advantageous and move exactly as this is listed to pass at least the other two items out of the three that were identified as heavily important or possibly all five of them, just depending on what I find out.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I ask for clarification on the motion? So the way that these contracts, the proposed contracts work is there's a master contract with the firm to provide these sorts of services. But the dollar amount that they get paid and the campaigns that they work on, that would be contracted through individual task orders. And so if you want to approve the contracts, we would have the contracts in place for grass clippings and whatever other campaigns you may or may not approve down the road. But you're not, you would not be authorizing staff to proceed with anything except grass clippings until further notice.
Because I want to make sure that the motion is sufficiently clear that it enables you to do something with it. It's not just intended to be a feel-good to bide time. How would you like me to phrase it such that it will allow you to spend the $20,000 that you've requested with respect to grass clippings and allow us time just to consider the remainder of it? I'm happy to modify it to read however you'd like that would help you accomplish that.
I'm not sure on how to phrase the motion, but it's approval of the contracts, but withholding the only authorizing expenditure on the grass clippings campaign. Correct.
Okay. I'll modify the motion to basically reflect that terminology. Fair enough?
Okay. Okay. And the second holds with Commissioner Pritchett?
And I'll just say, since no one else has their lights on, you know, I agree with Commissioner Smith and you said much of what I was going to say, that, you know, we agreed when we, when people were advocating for this lagoon tax that we had a plan. But ultimately, we're the ones responsible for not only making the decision, but agreeing to that plan. And we're the ones ultimately who are accountable. So because someone has a different vision, I can talk to two scientists and I've done it, almost back to back in my office, where says, you get your scientist that swears up and down and, like you said, has multiple degrees, has been, you know, working for 40 years, will tell you we need an inlet. And then you get the next scientist saying, that's crazy, we absolutely don't, we just need to keep dredging. And so, I mean, when you, which scientist has more weight? I mean, do you put their resumes against each other and or dismiss them completely? No, we have to listen to all sides. But ultimately, we're the ones that, not just the people who voted for it, but people who are watching how we spend those funds, we're the ones who are accountable because we approved that plan. And I don't always agree with the Oversight Board. In fact, I heard during the discussion, because my staff goes, because Commissioner Loeb is on that board, so I don't attend, but that at first, they were actually going to send this back to us and say, we don't want any changes, tell the commission, you know, this is what we want. Well, you know, we asked, we asked you to look at it and we asked you to make changes, please offer something. So I'm glad that cooler heads prevailed and they saw that the, what the intention of the board was. Because again, you know, ultimately, we may not always agree on, you know, scientists may not always agree, but ultimately, we're the ones held accountable to our residents, we're the ones held accountable to our voters. Now, as far as this education, there is value to education. While I don't, I don't agree that it should be squandered by any means, but there is value to understanding your audience and understanding the people that need the education because you may have pockets of neighborhoods that understand what fertilizer ordinances we have in place. You may have people that are just selectively defiant on, and you'll never change their minds. And I think I had this conversation with Dr. Soto in my office the other day. So I do believe that there's value, I just think that we need to be careful how much we're spending. So I'll support the motion as it's sort of limited in scope for now. But I agree that, I'm glad that we're scaling it down some.
Call the question?
All right. I'll call that question. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item I-2. And I have one card on this. I don't know if staff wants to just...
I was just going to remind you, this is the item that you all tabled at the last meeting to bring back. It's the same agenda item as you had before with information on how the funds were received and distributed over the last five years.
Okay, Martha Passaro? You don't have to rush. You had kind of a long walk.
As long this takes. So I am very pleased to be able...
Can I get your name and address? I'm sorry.
Martha Passaro, 1280 Marshall Court, Merritt Island, Florida. And I'm representing the Native Heritage Gathering Incorporated, which has been a member of the Brevard Cultural Alliance for the better part of two decades. And we're here today to address the funding through the Brevard Cultural Grants and the support that our county can provide for this much needed, we call it a festival, but it's more of an educational outreach program that celebrates Native American Heritage Month each and every year. And we're coming into our 11th year and we don't want it to be the 11th hour for funding. We have a situation at the state level that we're seeing, pardon me, budgets are being cut and grant funding is disappearing at an alarming rate. And we don't want to see that at our local level. We do this festival under the guidance of the Brevard County Cultural Grants and an annual way to provide a free festival for all of our residents to learn about Native Americans during Native American Heritage Month. In fact, we get a proclamation out from the White House each and every year. And that directs us to celebrate, to educate and to participate in Native American culture and education. And this is the one place in Brevard County, yay, in the entire central region of Florida that we can do this, that is still alive and is still functioning. And our goal and our mission is to provide this as a family-friendly, free-of-admissions event to celebrate that heritage each and every month. In working with the Brevard Cultural Alliance, we have been put through strident accounting and a strident panel review of each and every application. And that hasn't always been easy. We've seen in the older days, we had a powwow at Melbourne. We've changed that into the Native Heritage, Native Rhythms Festival. And at the powwow rate, we were going to the BCA for grants that were possibly competing amongst all of the arts organizations at a level that was vastly funded, way, way, way above where we are now. It's been around $100,000 for a long, long time. $130,000 is fantastic. But understand, we're separating that and allocating it amongst many organizations, many valuable organizations. We're just one. We're just one of them. And when we come down to it, at our annual budgeting allowance, we're given about $7,500 that can ask for, but we're competing and we get about $1,000 a year. It goes a long ways. We don't want it to see go away and we do love BCA. They help us enormously. So please, consider taking good care of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Marilyn Grigsby.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Marilyn Grigsby, Daniel River Drive, Cocoa Beach, Florida.
Thanks.
Commissioners, on behalf of the Space Coast Art Festival Board of Directors, I would like to express our concern in your proposed cut in the funding of the art and culture in Brevard County. Our organization is made up entirely of volunteers. We benefit from your funding of the Brevard Cultural Arts Program. And should you decide not to fund the program, it will definitely affect our ability to present our 55th Space Coast Fine Arts Festival and Student Art Show this year. To produce a recognized fine arts show is an ongoing year-round effort with associated cost and dedication. With donated dollar sources diminished, fundraising becomes a monumental task. When I arrived in Brevard County in 1963, there were very few cultural events taking place. If you wanted to attend a live concert or show, you had to spend an afternoon or to spend an afternoon at an art museum, one had to travel out of county, most likely to Orlando. In the years since, through the hard work of volunteers and paid alike and in cooperation and support of previous Brevard County Commissioners, we now have a viable arts and cultural program in Brevard County. The loss of funding for cultural opportunities and programs will, I believe, reduce the vibrancy and quality of life for all citizens. In order to continue to build the tax base of Brevard County, the county must continue to attract key businesses, corporations, visitors and retirees to our county. If the county has no cultural opportunities to offer, businesses and residents will seek other areas where these opportunities exist and the tax base will diminish. Cultural funding is an investment in the future of Brevard County. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara Engel?
Hi, I'm Tara Engel, 325 South Banana River Boulevard, Cocoa Beach. And I really just want to echo what Martha said and the previous speaker. I just, it's very important that we get this kind of cultural support. I'm with the American Police Hall of Fame and we do a lot that is not simply cultural, but is educational as well. And I know a lot of the other organizations that are being funded by the BCA do also. And there is so much that we do in the county to support the residents and to support the community and also to encourage tourism and to give a certain quality of life that I think is essential for this area. And I think the amount of money is, while not insignificant, is certainly insignificant when compared to what we give back to the community. So I would just urge you to consider supporting this at the full amount and supporting the BCA in everything they do in order to give this area an extra special quality of life and in order to support the tourism that pays a lot of taxes and covers a lot of the expenses in this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's all the cards I have. Commissioner Loeb?
Just have a few comments with respect to this item. This was one that we visited at the last meeting and is coming back yet again. Overall, and I'll try to keep this brief because I know there are a lot of folks waiting on some other items, probably one or two other items, I imagine. That said, my goal with respect to this is to wean the arts off of the county funds and wean it onto TDC funds to whatever degree is possible. I would like to see the arts weaned off of the general funds as much as we possibly can because that money is absolutely critical for us to pay for things like police, things like infrastructure, where we have the freedom to spend it where we... like infrastructure, where we have the freedom to spend it where we need to. That said, I think TDC is an appropriate venue. If you have a perceived shortfall, or if there's a need to obtain more than the county commission is willing to give you, that's a potential source of recourse. Or essentially, what I would suggest is if you're not getting as much as you'd like to from us, go to TDC because I can tell you, I know of at least one member on the TDC that would be very willing to hear that request. I'm happy to make the motion on TDC. If someone wants to approach and help me with respect to drafting that, to ensure that it is, in fact, what you're looking for. I think a good middle ground as opposed to just butchering folks altogether who were basically put through a process of applying for grants with the understanding that money would be available on the other side. I don't think it's fair to kind of pull the rug out from under them after the fact. But I do understand that there are some concerns that are valid concerns that were raised. Looking at this in terms of the actual agenda item, $100,000, what's being requested is $100,000 from TDC funds. Great, God bless. And then $30,000 from separate county funds. What I'm going to propose and make a motion to do is to allocate the $100 that's requested from TDC, and then to allocate $25,000 instead of $30,000 from the county funds. Having in mind that you all are certainly encouraged to go to TDC to seek that difference now or at any point in the future, I will tell you that next year, my intention is probably to move to drop that by another $5,000 at the county level so that you all have time to adjust and see what sort of response you get from TDC. But at this point, I would move to approve $125,000 with $100,000 from the source listed, namely, TDC, from their Cultural Marketing Program Fund, and then an additional $25,000 now from the county commission from the Community Cultural Grants Funds.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Commissioner Loeb, I think you outlined that very well. And I don't want to cut the funds off from the Cultural Alliance. I don't want to cut these people's programs off at the knees either. So, if we're going to do some cuts, I would suggest we do it next year. I don't know that they would suffer that much overall if we just cut back $5,000 as you suggested. So, if that's the way you want to go, I would not oppose that. But I do think, and I agree, that cultural funding is an investment in Brevard County's future. I know an awful lot of people that come here. I go to plays. That's my cultural thing. But there's other people that like going to the symphony and doing other things. And I know that a broad cross-section of the county does like the cultural aspect. And I do know also that people that we want to come here and that we desperately need here to do the jobs that the new businesses are bringing to us, the millennials and such, I know they're big into culture also. So, the TDC would be a great place for them to get funding. And I think that... And another one, I would just mention that I don't want to cut off the funds for the Police Hall of Fame here. I mean, I think the Police Hall of Fame does a wonderful job of indicating to the public and bestowing upon our police force a lot of good, positive vibes and good information. And they honor the people that keep us safe. So, if you want to do that, I would be not opposed to it.
Commissioner Bruchett?
Okay, I like your idea, but I've got just like maybe a little bit of a change, if you'd be willing to do it. I think the TDC is probably a good place for this also, sir. What if we leave it alone this year, and over the next three years, we go ahead and wean it by 10 so that we have a three-year plan of moving it off the general fund? I do love these types of programs also. This way, it doesn't affect any of the funding. And I think they are important for job retention and being able to promote getting people into the area because we're trying to get more workforce here. And I think it also promotes revenue. So, it's good for the economy. Therefore, I think it's a good tourist development tax item. And I think maybe if we partition our member there, maybe he can make it work real strongly. But I think that would be good because then everybody's already ready for this. We've put them through the work. So, that would be what I would like to see happen if it would be possible.
Commissioner Loeb?
I'm happy to do that. The only caveat I would say is I'd want to make it definite this evening so that this isn't something that's fluid and comes back next year. So, I'm trying to figure out the best way to actually word the motion, but I'm not opposed to granting $130 this year.
We could make a separate motion possibly, and that we kick it to the TDC to see if they'd be willing to pick it up.
What do you think the best way to do this, Attorney Bentley?
If you want to approve this item, we could, you know, that way that they'll know it's the commission's intention to shift it to the TDC.
I do, but my only concern is I don't want to put this out so that there's some uncertainty in terms of whether what we're discussing is actually going to be accomplished as far as dropping it by 10 in a year.
Well, we can do that. We did that four years ago, I guess, with regard to...
Two years ago.
The...
Community-based organizations.
Yeah.
CBOs.
Well, how do we word that? Because I'd like to mirror that essentially.
Well, you just say that we're going to go forward with $130,000 this year, and then in each of the succeeding years, we will reduce it by $10,000 each until we reach the $100,000 level.
Okay, I think is that sufficiently clear, do you think?
Yes. I mean, you're going to be dealing with a whole new budget here and all of that, but you can certainly express your intent for the future.
Okay, I'm happy with that. I'll make the motion accordingly.
Do the clerk's office get that clearly?
I'm sorry, you guys are great.
I want to make sure.
Okay, so, it's at 1:30 now, and you're going to drop it $10,000 each year for the next three years, so it's down to $100,000, which is to the TDC.
And that drop would be from the general fund portion of the money that's dedicated.
Okay, so, the motion was by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Smith. And I'll just say, I have to agree. I think one thing, I love the Police Hall of Fame, but they also work with the Brevard Achievement Center, which I think is just fantastic. I think it's one of the great things. You know, when people think of the BCA, they think of just a bunch of artwork because that's what they see. But they're so far-reaching, and you guys do so much that, you know, if we can do very little to help you stretch it out to so many different organizations, I'm a huge fan. And I spoke with Neil Levine before on this and about, you know, your initiative about moving those funds to the TDC. And I think that that is definitely the most appropriate as opposed to our general fund. So, I like the fact that we're moving toward that and getting it out of our budget. So, with that, I'll support it. Any more discussion? Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tavaia voting nay. Okay, moving on to item I three.
Commissioners, this is another item that the board tabled from last meeting. I instructed Commissioner Loeb to come back. And the resolution does three things. It waives the updated procedures of the land acquisition manuals defined on page eight, amends the education degree from master's degree to four-year post-secondary academic degree to be on the selection and management committee. And then the motion would allow those members who are not reappointed to serve until somebody's been newly appointed, or the member themselves have been reappointed.
Okay, do you want to speak now? I have three cards.
Just real briefly.
Okay.
I just want to point out before we get going on this, there was some ambiguity, at least, that I picked up on in terms of what specific requirements the board was looking for as far as a post-secondary academic degree. But what I had put, basically the gist that I had perceived when I took this back to work on, when it last came up, was folks had a four-year degree in mind. So, we're basically backing it off from a more advanced degree to a four-year post-secondary, basically a bachelor's of science or equivalent degree. I know there was some question that folks had. And I had, I believe, one or two individuals reach out to the office with respect to what specifically the revised requirements were proposed to be. So, essentially, it's a BS or an equivalent degree. You know, it's not that it's an associate's degree. So, it's not a tremendously marked change. It is a change, but it's not such a severe or extreme change as some folks were concerned about.
Okay. I have Vince Lamb. And after Vince, we have Mary Spar.
Good evening. I'm Vince Lamb, 11590 Dragon Point Drive, Merritt Island. Apologize for the use of notes, but I've reached an age where I have to do this. I want to quickly provide a little background on the selection and management committee. The EAL program today has acquired 27,000 acres of conservation lands and operates three environmental education centers. In 2018, these centers drew more than 75,000 visitors, a mixture of residents and tourists. Last Saturday, the Pioneer Day at Sam's House drew 1,000 people on a rainy day. A third of the field trips associated with the Space Coast Birding and Wildlife Festival took place on EAL program lands. The program was founded in 91 after a November 90 referendum that provided the initial funding with a vote of 60%. What few people remember is that the EAL program was on the ballot in 1989, and it failed. The explanation is that it failed because the voters did not trust the commission to pick good conservation lands. Different county commission. So, when the EAL program first failed, somebody came up with the idea that using a committee of scientists to spearhead the land selection. When the 1990 election was held, the proposed SMC was already selected. The measure passed, perhaps influenced by the SMC concept and the proposed members. In 2004, another referendum was needed to provide more funds and add conservation lands, manage the purchased lands, and operate the ed centers. This passed with close to a 70% positive vote. The SMC can play as... The 2004 referendum will sunset in 2024, leaving the EAL program without funding. Another referendum is needed to provide the ongoing funding, perhaps as early as 2020. The SMC can play an important role to gain voter support during this referendum. Informed voters like to see citizen involvement in programs like this. I have no strong feelings about the education requirements for the SMC. However, I'm concerned about the anticipated term limits that could remove people who have volunteered to serve on this board for more than 10 years, two from the very beginning. Two of these are PhD scientists who serve at KSC Ecological Program staff. One's a scrub jay biologist, the other one's a native plant expert. Their unique skills are truly irreplaceable. The other three, who were not appointed in January, bring valuable skills and a knowledge and history of land management. I support the concept of adding new people with fresh ideas to the SMC, assuming that they are scientists with conservation land experience. I'm comfortable with letting you work out the specifics, but I wanted to have a little insight into the history and importance of doing this right. I encourage you to visit an EAL conservation land or an education center. They're in each of your districts. I hope this information is helpful to you.
Thank you. Mary Spar. And after Mary, we have Kim Zerillo.
Good evening again. Mary Spar, 825 Cuthbert's Cove Court, Cocoa. I'm sure that all of you recognize the excellent work of the EAL Selection and Management Committee. The highly talented members of this committee, who have served the SMC on their own time, have created an exceptional and wonderful network of EAL sanctuaries that protect our endangered lands and also provide opportunities for public recreation. Thank you for allowing the members whose terms you did not renew to reapply for service on the SMC. I sincerely hope that all of them will reapply, joining other talented applicants. Then you can choose who will serve on that board. Instead of passing the resolution at the moment, I urge you to refer the proposed change in the educational criteria to the EAL Procedures Committee for comment. Right now, you do not even know if the Procedures Committee would be amenable to such a change. Referring the matter to the Procedures Committee for comment would be similar to the strategy you used for the Lagoon Educational Contract, when you referred the Servicee contract to the COC for comment. Asking an appropriate committee for comment shows that you care about their opinions and that you want to receive as much input as possible before making a change to the land acquisition manual.
Thank you, Mary. Kim Zerillo?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Can you give me a name and address, please?
Kim Zerillo. My address?
You can give your street name, and that'd be fine.
Melbourne Village, Sheridan Road. I'm concerned about the items on the agenda to waive the update procedures of the land as defined. The Procedures Committee was established as a check and balance, if you will, the Procedures Committee, to make recommendation to changes to the land acquisition manual, to the program criteria for SMC members. And I think it's very important that you maintain the protocol as is in place. And I'm concerned, it isn't clearly stated here if this is to waive all procedures on that page or only for this particular change. I think the citizens may need some clarification on that. Also, the existing criteria does not keep anyone from having a bachelor's degree from serving on the committee. And it allows with a substitute of experience to serve on the committee. But what we really want are the best people qualified to do the work for the citizens of this county, for the community of the county, to maintain the mission that was put in place for the program, which is biological diversity and management. And so, if we lower our standards, there is absolutely no need to make this change unless we just want to change words around. But I think it is concerning that you feel a need to lower the change. Don't we want to get the most qualified, the most experienced, the most knowledgeable people know how to manage these lands? I too am concerned. I have served on this committee for a long time with the discussion at the board meeting about term limits, about buying any more land, and so on. And what I would like to say is at the commission meeting, when this was discussed, it causes concern for those of us who, the referendum says nothing about changing buying land or not buying land because the commission decided not to. The referendum is in place to purchase land as recommended. You can turn down a recommendation. That's your prerogative. Anyway, I think this is, it's very concerning, and I think there is no need to amend educational qualifications because it's already in place that you can substitute experience for a degree. But we want the best, most qualified. We had two NASA scientists that weren't reappointed, and I'm more concerned about people like that who have on-the-ground experience and a long history of educational products, papers, and so forth that they have produced. So, I'll leave it at there. I ask you to reconsider.
Thank you, Commissioner Loeb.
A couple things. Ms. Bentley, could you briefly address her...
Mike.
I apologize. Thank you. Ms. Bentley, could you briefly address her concern with respect to the extent that we're waiving the land acquisition manuals requirements?
Section one of the resolution says that the waiver is limited to the purposes of this resolution only. It is not a blanket waiver.
Is there any ambiguity in your mind?
No.
I appreciate that. I certainly appreciate the comments. I understand where they're coming from. But in my mind, when I look at something like this, I have a question as to whether or not we're getting diminishing returns when we ramp up the requirements that we put in place for folks to serve. I think a committee like this, it's important that we don't have anyone stagnate when there are other individuals who are interested in doing the work and that are qualified to do the work but are precluded from doing the work based upon some unnecessarily onerous requirement. Mr. Lamb came up a little bit ago, and he mentioned something about trusting folks to pick good conservation lands. And I agree that when we look back at what the original actions were that were involved with this group, there was a lot to do with selection of the lands as opposed to maintaining it. But at this point, it doesn't seem to me that there's a terribly great interest at the commission level to acquire additional EAL's lands. Now, you can agree with that, you can disagree with it, you can think it's great or terrible. But the purpose that may have been in place back then doesn't reflect the reality of the situation that's in place now. And I'm concerned, just as if you have a particular car, let's say you have a Toyota Corolla, it would be great, and there's certainly nothing wrong with having the engineer that designed the airbags from Takata to come out and replace your Takata airbag, but it's totally unnecessary. You can have someone that's trained, that has enough experience in swapping out the airbag, that it's not going to kill you when you drive away. And in substance, you're going to have no benefit from having that additional amount of experience, or you'll have such a marginal benefit that by excluding folks who otherwise would be able to get involved... involved, you're really disenfranchising that group from being able to have as much of an input as might otherwise be appropriate. So I'm going to move to approve this and adopt it as it's listed at this point.
Any further discussion? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Second by Commissioner Tobia. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. If it pleases the commission, I'm going to take a 10-minute break because we have like 17 cards, and then the item immediately following, we have another 17 cards. So it's going to be a long one. So I'll let everybody stretch and take a quick 10-minute break. Thanks.